I'd like to call to order the public hearing of the Board of Education for June 10th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mrs. Marks?
Here.
Mrs. Biffey?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Here.
Mrs. Havocorst? Mr. Bosch?
Here.
We do need a secretary.
I'm nominee Ron. Sorry for the interruption, but I needed to get that out quickly.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I believe that that motion was for the full evening, both meetings.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, good. Okay. All right, we have a presentation tonight. We have an overview of the final amended budget for fiscal year 2024.
Good evening. So tonight, the administration is requesting that the board adopt the final amended budget. So we made a couple of changes this year to reflect updated property tax, revenue increases from the recapture levy, as well as some extra grant money, the property, or excuse me, the teacher vacancy grant, among some other things we received. Increased our revenues about $926,000 to a total of just over $32 million. We increased our operating expenses about $555,000 to a total of just under $33 million, and we have an operating deficit of $956,000. But that's due to a couple of different things. We had construction payments of $460,000 to pay off the balance of our 2022 work that came out of our operations and maintenance fund, and we're budgeting a payment of $575,000 for the first installment of the Churchill Roof Project this summer. We are expecting to receive that invoice prior to June 30th. And we also keep in our budget unfilled positions. We had about $430,000 in salaries and benefits on filled positions. Some of that had to be covered by internal subbing costs and others, but our substitute costs are a little bit under historical averages as well. So we do expect at the end of the year, this will wash out to a slight operating deficit.
Any questions?
No.
From the audience? I'm sorry, what? Do you want to explain that?
No, so what we, there were some changes when we initially adopted the budget back in September to now where we had some increases in revenues, but we also had increases in expenses. So they're going to wash out pretty much at the end of the year. So we'll have probably a slight operating deficit this year.
Any other questions from the board or the audience?
Just a point of clarification. I think for those that may not be aware, or just a reminder that historically, our district has run in what's called a structural deficit. So when you hear the word deficit, that's typically how our operations have been. And we were fortunate enough to have some inflows, but we also had some expenses. So this definitely is put, and we're in a better position than we've been historically. Just want to make sure that's mentioned.
Thank you for that. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, give us one minute. We'll pull up our agendas for our regular meeting. Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Homewood School District 153 for June 10th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mrs. Marks?
Here.
Mrs. Biffey?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Still here.
Mrs. Havocorst?
Here.
Mr. Bosch?
Here.
Thank you. And I just want to mention that Mrs. Havocorst had surgery today, so she is not able to be with us tonight. We have approval of minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting of May 6th, 2024, and the special Board of Education meeting of May 15th, 2024. Are there any additions or corrections to either set of minutes?
No.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have future dates.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I wanted to let you know that one week from Wednesday, nine days from today, the district office will be closed in celebration of Juneteenth. And also that morning, there is a community-wide parade that kicks off from Western Avenue Elementary School in Flossmore and goes to downtown Flossmore. And so the district will be participating in that, along with numerous other groups. Last year was the first year for the parade here in Flossmore, so we look forward to doing that again. And then on July 4th, we're obviously closed for the holiday, and also on Friday, July 5th, we'll be closed.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have some presentations tonight. The first is recognition for Representative Will Davis for unwavering support of Homewood School District 153. And we have a proclamation. Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas Homewood School District 153 has long suffered from a structural deficit, making it difficult to provide the level of quality education our community's children need and deserve. Whereas Homewood School District 153 sought to address its funding inequities with the passage of two referenda approving the issuance of working cash bonds in 2012 and 2016. Whereas Homewood School District 153 sought to address its structural deficit with the passage of a tax rate increase referendum in 2022. Whereas that referendum passed with over 70% of the vote in 2022. Whereas an unprecedented drop in equalized assessed values meant a shortfall of about $2 million in the expected revenues from the 2022 referendum. Whereas State Representative Will Davis understood that the shortfall had continued negative consequences for our students despite the best efforts and intentions of their community to ameliorate these consequences. Whereas State Representative Will Davis worked closely with District 153 officials to introduce legislation in the General Assembly to adjust the 2023 levy and allow School District 153 to collect the full amount of education revenues approved by voters. Whereas State Representative Will Davis was a tireless champion of HB 4284 in the State House. Whereas State Representative Will Davis maintained great communications with the School District 153 and other constituents about the bill's progress. Whereas HB 4284 was approved by both chambers of the General Assembly and signed into law by the governor. Whereas State Representative Will Davis embodies the very best in public service as a responsive and dedicated advocate for the people of Illinois, Illinois's 30th District. Now, therefore being resolved that Homewood School District 153 recognizes State Representative Will Davis's achievements and contributions to District 153 and to the greater community with our deepest appreciation for his relentless efforts to provide the highest quality education for students of 153. Shelley Marks, President, Board of Education.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And before we present this to you, I just want to say how much I appreciate your concern for our school district, your dedication to us, and your resolve to help us solve an issue efficiently and quickly. And your communication is beyond what anybody would ever expect. It heralds back to a day when people did communicate with each other, and we really appreciate everything that you have done for us. And on a personal note, I appreciate your friendship and the collaboration that we've had with each other over many, many, many years since before you were a representative. Thank you for being part of our team. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just add, from the moment we found out the bad news about the referendum not allowing us to collect the money that we thought we were going to collect and that the voters had approved, we asked ourselves, what can we do at this point? What other options are there? And there was really one, and that was legislative relief. And so we reached out to Representative Davis, and this was in October. I went back and found the original email. This was in October. And from the beginning, he has been just a tireless advocate for us. And, you know, sometimes it's hyperbole to talk about service to others, but Will, you absolutely embodied that. From the beginning, you worked with us, as Shelley said, nonstop communication. I mean, so when people say, I'm here to serve, and reach out to me if you ever need anything, you say it, but you mean it. And it's just deeply appreciated by us. So thank you so much.
Yeah, so I guess it's... So I think just to kind of go off of what Shelley and Scott have said, one of the things that I find, that I found most interesting the last couple of months of working with Shelley and Scott and with you, Will, was the complexity of our government and that it's no small feat to get legislation through our government. And there were times where I was doubtful and was wondering what was going on, but you stayed the course and you kept on going and kept on going. And I think without your efforts behind the scenes, which clearly, I think the result in the end showed your efforts, very much appreciated. And just, there aren't enough words to thank you for all of your efforts and what you did. It wasn't an easy task and very much appreciated and great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let me take that proclamation. Come on up. How about if the whole board comes up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to raise the screen?
I also wanted to present Representative Davis with an honorary 153 staff member shirt. And the fact that every student, every day, and again, Will certainly invited that.
Yeah, okay, just had it over. There we go.
Okay, the next presentation we have is a one-year update for the district's strategic plan. And Dr. McAllister will be presenting the update. And while he's getting ready, I want to mention that a lot of places that do a strategic plan, put a lot of effort into it, and then it kind of sits on a shelf and nothing much comes of it. I'm very proud to say that we have been working diligently to move forward with all of the great things in our plan. So we'll get this going in a second.
All right. Well, thank you again for everybody who's here to hear about our strategic plan. Board of Education wanted to provide you with a quick update of where we are after one year. And I'm actually going to ask our administrative team, each person is kind of in charge of an area that you're going to see, the six goals that we established roughly one year ago when we met in April of 2023. And each slide starts off, you have this in your packets, of course, but I wanted to just point out a couple of things on the opening slide for each of our six goals. First, something called the Theory of Change, which I was part, Shelley and I actually took part in the Homewood-Flossmore High School strategic planning process that just took place. And one of the things that they had, which I thought was very helpful, was what they called the Theory of Change. And basically, it takes your goals and it says, how does this relate to the district's mission? So it's an if-then statement. So each of these six goals that we're going to talk about this evening, there's an if-then statement. And I'll just point out, I'll start each one by talking about the Theory of Change, then I'll turn it over to the administrator who's going to speak on that specific goal. So for curriculum, instruction, and assessment, if we align our instructional practices with identified learning targets and assess our students accordingly, then we will maximize student learning. So that's kind of that connection, again, between the strategic planning process and our mission. So I'm going to turn this over to Kathy Shaifline. She's our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and she'll go through some of the details on where we've been and where we're going.
And just so you know, that strategic plan goal, that's a minimum. And I believe we're really already there with learning targets have been established for each content area and each grade level. That's all found on the atlas, and you board members probably remember, it's been about 11 years when we started that process. It's a never-ending process. It's a journey. We continue to update it. It's a live document, and we look every year. What do we need to tweak and what do we need to change? So those learning targets are there, and making sure that common assessments, at least one per trimester, that is aligned to all of those standards and shared together with common planning is being done. That's a minimum. It's being done much more often, in some cases, on a weekly basis. Okay. So let's look at the two main goals from strategic planning. First of all, to ensure that instruction, assessment, and reporting of learning standards is consistent among all grade levels. So we talk about those learning targets. They're based on those learning standards that are required, and we talk about each child meeting those standards. So we need to look at each student by student by standard. And then how do we share that information? So what we've done is we've implemented a new program called Forefront, where we align each and every question to the standard and to see how the students are doing by that standard. And we have this wonderful program. It's time-consuming to put it all together. So last year, we started with math in K through 5. We were able to get that done this year and then move on to K through 2, language arts, so that each assessment is aligned to a standard. And each time a student gets a question right or has trouble with that question, we can see how they're doing on that particular standard. The other thing we talked about is how do we report that out to our families? So this year, we've met, and we started researching how standards-based grading is being used in the South Cook region. And it's being used different ways in different districts across the South Cook area. We met together as a district to look at our own reporting between buildings. So now that we see the differences and we're working towards that consistency, we're going to use Forefront to make sure we're aligning grading to the standards and so that we can report grading by standards. It is a process, so it's taking a little bit of time. So what we're doing next is using Forefront through 6 through 8 math and 3 through 5 language arts. So you see how it's, it's a five-year plan, so it takes a little bit of time. We have curriculum-writing teams already working this summer, examining grade reporting practices and making sure they're aligned to standards so that our report cards report on what the kids know and are able to do by student by standard. So that's already happening right now. Actually, last week and this week, you see all the cars around here, like, what do you mean? Is the school out? There's all these people here? It's all our teachers working on these curriculum-writing projects for standards on our strategic goal. The next goal, it was supposed to be just three minutes. I think I over that, sorry. Implement research-based instructional strategies that promote student engagement. That is a big passion of mine. I feel like it's very important that our students are doing the talking and the moving, and it's a very engaging classrooms. We have been working on this mission for quite some time. Approximately nine years ago, we started with training students, or not students, training our teachers on engagement strategies and cooperative learning structures. We've trained 97 staff members so far, and that's during the summer. So that's teachers coming in during the summer for this training. That's before now. So we have, I think we have 24 teachers signed up for training this summer, which that's coming in the end of July and beginning of August. We've also completed a full-year pilot of our new ELA resource in grades 3 through 5, which the board approved a couple meetings ago. And we're moving on to researching social studies because there are new ISBE social studies standards. So we never stop researching the new things, and that's what's next. What we're doing moving forward is continuing to encourage all new staff members to attend our training prior to them becoming tenured. So these 24 teachers that are coming in, some are brand-new hires, some were hired last year or the year before, but prior to getting tenure, we really encourage all of them to attend this training when we're observing their instructional practices, making sure that those are great engagement strategies are being used. We're also implementing instructional coaching on those specific strategies. Last week, we sent one of our mentor leaders to a coaching training on how to support new teachers using those strategies. And then moving forward, we're continuing to research more ELA resources and social studies resources as part of our curriculum adoption cycle. So that's what's going on in Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have a goal related to student needs. You don't have to look in the media often to hear about students and how they've struggled, social, emotional needs, especially since the pandemic. And so we have a goal related to student needs, Theory of Change. If all students feel safe and welcomed in the school environment, then they can reach their academic potential while also optimizing their social and emotional well-being. So to discuss this, our Director of Student Support Services, Melanie Mandy Sotza.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. So, of course, I deal on the higher end of things usually with student needs, and having all of our students feel safe and welcome in school. Some of the great things that I do appreciate you all giving us the leeway for is having like our registered behavior tax work at school and everything. So within the classrooms, all of our students do feel safe, and we have students that need a little bit more extra love, as I would say, versus some others. But then on the other end is a Tier One effort. If we could go to the next slide. It is really finding a universal screener to be able to speak to all of our students from kindergarten all the way through 8th grade, which has proven to be a little bit more difficult than not because our needs, as we know, from pre-K through 2nd grade are very different as you go into 3rd grade and you begin to grow and kind of understand who you are as a person, and then going to middle school. The Willow team has worked to be able to look up a program that is within this slide to try to pilot, and that's kind of where we are right now at that particular school. I did send you all to an email tonight of another possible resource to be able to use as well for our 3rd through 8th grade students. One of the things that we would like to do to save some money is to be able to look at the questions that are in, and you guys can look at that at your leisure, to be able to use some of those questions and make it appropriate for our students, and perhaps as part of their registration and things like that, be able to get that feedback before we walk into the building. As we know, our social workers, counselors, all of our staff are working very hard every day to meet every single need of every single child, which is no small feat at all. So when they do that, they are very, very busy. Obviously, we have Second Step and all those programs that we use right now. They are doing a phenomenal job of just working through issues that, like talk tickets and things like that, that they have at all the buildings when students need to, you know, just chat or speak. But again, the universal screener, we've actually been trying to hone one in for the past few years, and nobody can ever quite get that one thing. So I believe that we're at that point because luckily, our social workers and our school psychologists meet monthly to talk about different student issues. That will probably have to create something that's appropriate for us, as we do as 153 proud, strong staff members, to create something that's appropriate for each building. It kind of feeds off. But like I said, at your leisure, you could look at the 3rd through 8th grade tool that we did find, and then also, like I said, our Willow students, the social worker there, Wendy Gatewood and Lindsay Lang, looking at this particular program there. So it is a bit difficult to try to find one thing, but we are definitely working on it and dedicated. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Next, every school district in the state of Illinois and probably the United States has questions about finance. So we heard earlier Representative Davis's help in our district acquiring funds, but it's a never-ending battle to try to get enough money to pay for everything that we'd like to provide. So our theory, if we adequately manage our revenues and expenditures, then we'll be able to provide a rich educational experience to our students while also attracting the best professionals to work here. So to discuss this, our Chief School Business Official, Eric Trimburger.
So when the board had the referendum campaign, they had three goals they wanted to achieve. They wanted to eliminate the structural deficit, rebuild cash reserves, and take care of some much-needed maintenance that have been deferred over the years. So we wanted to look at our fund balances and be able to increase those by one month cash on hand each year from their current level, and remain at the top one-half of elementary districts in regard to compensation. So when we ended fiscal year 2023, we had about 89 days cash on hand, or about three months. So in order to increase those cash reserves, we partnered with our elected officials that we said earlier to get Public YAC 103-0587, which allowed us to capture remaining $1.7 million from the referendum. We also attained a three-year, $117,000 teacher vacancy grant to help attract or attain employees. So now that the governor has signed a legislation and we received confirmation today from the county that has been implemented onto our tax agency rate report, we'll develop five-year projections using all of the referendum proceeds, and we'll be able to establish targets for fund balances over the next five years. And as part of our preparation going into negotiations this fall, we'll be doing a market analysis to develop salary comparables with our neighboring south suburban districts in preparation to provide compensation in line with the board's objectives.
Thank you, Eric. As we talked about during the referendum, we have three school buildings, all of which were built in the 1950s and 1960s. So they are all aging, and many of the things that are easy to neglect, just like your own house, it's easy to push off a new roof or new windows, but eventually, you have to address those things, and so too it is with school buildings. So keeping up with our facilities is a big challenge. If we provide safe, clean, and modernized spaces for student, for learning, then our students and staff can focus on teaching and learning. So to talk about our facilities, our Director of Operations and Grounds, Kevin Keen.
Thank you. Like we said, so we're going to identify a major upgrade. This year, as everybody knows, it's going to be the Churchill Roof. It's not very, nobody really sees it, except for people that go up there, but anybody in the building knows there's many leaks. I've spent thousands of dollars over the last few years just patching and trying to stop leaks, but it's to the point where it's not, we're at the end of the lifetime for that roof. We are cutting down some trees. Some people don't like you cutting down trees, but the trees are dumping so many leaves onto this roof, and it takes away from, well, it helps deteriorate the roof, clog up drains, it holds water. So we found that necessary to remove those trees as well. One other thing we are doing this, excuse me, this summer, we did get a grant. It was a matching grant, so it was a, we are putting it for, towards, we have $100,000. We're going to get some new doors, three doors at Willow, one major door at Churchill, and one major door here at James Hart. And like it says on the, up on, excuse me, this slide, that, you know, we did find a new architecture company, and we'll look forward to working with them in the future here. And again, we're using this manufacturer's representative. In the old days, we'd get an architect, and then they would get a chunk of the pie, and they would, you know, farm out the... and they would, you know, farm out the work to somebody else, and everybody. And using this manufacturer representative, like it says up there, we're going to be saving a lot of money that we can put towards something else. And then hopefully, like we said, in the next ten years, we can work with the new architects, come up with a better plan, excuse me. I know Willow, I think it will be on the slate next year for a roof. Here, we are not too bad at James Hart. But yeah, we're always looking, as we know, as the money comes in, I'm going to work closely with Eric, and we will spend it where we can, where we think it's needed the most.
Thank you, Kevin. I'll also point out that we just found out we received a $100,000 pre-K grant. Just last week, we found this out. So we are going to use some of that money to apply to put in a cushy surface for our pre-K playground, which we just put in last year, that little fenced area adjacent to the existing playground. So we're excited to be able to do that, and I know our teachers are excited about it as well. I'm going to discuss human relations. The theory that we're talking about, if we increase the diversity of our workforce and retain those employees, then our students will benefit from having a more veteran staff reflective of our student demographics. And the specific goal, you know, when you talk about a five-year plan, you know, identifying targets, and we do have existing demographics for our staff, but the goal is very explicit here to increase the percentage of certified staff who identify as non-white by 5% a year. Not an easy goal, but I think you set a lofty goal that you want to attain. So that is what we will be striving for for the next five years. One of the specific goals, increase recruitment and retention by ensuring a positive and supportive climate and culture. So we did survey our staff in January, and we will continue to look at things that we can do differently, stealing from other districts, of course. But also the Five Essentials, that's an annual survey given by the University of Chicago. There's a lot of useful data, and that just came out for this year's survey. So we'll be diving into that this summer to see what the results show us. And then also implementing one of those each year in order to improve climate and culture. We've talked about a book study for our administrative group, but again, looking at our Five Essentials data. I think it's really important to emphasize that the data, the data doesn't lie, right? So when we look at the breakdown of each of our buildings and the staff, certified and uncertified, that'll be useful for us to review on an annual basis. You can see the progress that we're making. And finally, our last goal is related to community and public relations. The theory, if we communicate with our families using a variety of methods, then we will increase participation in the educational process and achieve greater buy-in and support from our families. So to talk about that, our Director of Communications, Shelley Peck.
Have the microphone now. I'm going to circle back to the strategic plan goal and start with, if we want to do the theory of change, to increase the breadth and depth of our communications, it would be a good idea to find out where we are, have a better understanding of that. So to that end, we contracted this year with the National School Public Relations Association to conduct one of their school communications surveys for us, and that was done in March. The cool thing about that is that they work with hundreds of school districts all across the country, and the first twelve questions of the survey, they ask of all of the districts that they work with. So you can benchmark where you are compared to other school districts, and we did pretty well. In fact, she didn't, our consultant didn't have a whole lot of recommendations for us except there was a slight, a slightly decreased numbers in inter-staff communications for the schools. So that's going to be, that's worth digging into and finding out what's going on and how we can improve that going forward. Another interesting result from the survey, though, was, you know, social media. Everyone's talking about how we should be on social media. Social media didn't make the top five ways that our parents or our staff say that they get their information about the schools, which I found was really interesting. But we're still going to try to start an Instagram account to try to connect with those people who maybe didn't take the survey and who may still get their information from social media. The other thing that we hope to do is increase participation in our education endeavors. Luckily, we have three parent organizations who have the same goals as we do. And so a focus coming up for next year and the coming years will be to continue discussions with them, how we can coordinate, how we can better support what they're doing, how they can better support what we're doing. And that's my report.
Thank you, Shelley. So again, it's been a busy year for us. We're excited to be focusing on things related to teaching and learning after the pandemic. Remember, our previous five-year plan was interrupted by that, and so we're excited to be focusing on the year 2023 to '28. Are there any questions from anything you saw? Very good. We appreciate it. Any questions from the audience?
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is audience participation. Anyone who has come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda, we would ask that you please come up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and we do have a three-minute limit for comments. So any comments? Come on up.
Oh, good evening.
Hi.
My name is Katie Abercrombie. I live at 1-844-0-Dixie-Highway. Okay. I am here to address a graduation incident. My son graduated from James Hart. He's a graduate now. I'm here to address the concern that may appear to be personal, but on introspect, on introspection, I realize that it's more personal. It's more of public health and more for all of the youth. My son was subject to harm on graduation. He was publicly humiliated due to a very flawed policy that you have for if anyone claps not to give the diploma. Well, that was flawed because his family, we had four tickets that you guys said we needed to have. We were on the side of, in the auditorium, but the clap did not come from his family. It came from across the bleachers on the other side. So my son did not receive his diploma at that time. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. I'm a board-certified nurse practitioner, so mental health is very near and dear to my heart. So we need to think about that when we put policies that are in place that are very flawed. I won't mention his name, but he was the first one to be called. So he was the very first student. So that being said, he needed to wait for two hundred and three students because I believe you had two hundred and four students, just so that he could receive his diploma. I had to get up, which I shouldn't have to, to address that, and I addressed it because he seemed as if he was crying. And he still did not get his diploma till the end of the graduation. So a better policy needs to be put in place. And the mental health of students needs to also, that needs to be aware. That being said, it was a little bit more personal. So imagine being in eighth grade, and four years prior, your father passed away. And you happened to go to different schools. You were in the Homewood District. And your last year, you had, you came back to a district that you wanted to come back at. You were teased because you were the new kid. And just trying to get all of your studies done, the beginning of the year was good, but towards the end, it was very hard. Hard being because that special person is not there anymore, who attended everything, who attended all of your parent-teacher conferences, that attended every sports event that you went to. And so you struggled at the end to get all of your classwork done, not because you didn't know how to do it, just because this was a new year and everything was, was new for you. New students, new classrooms, new teachers, but yet you were able to overcome all of that, even the teasing. So, and you were in therapy because of all of this, correct? That being said, you came home after being told of a policy that you could not clap, and you made sure that your sister, as well as your aunt, and your brother and your mother did not clap because you wanted to receive your diploma. And so we understood that assignment. And that being said, he wanted a new suit. He wanted to also have a new appearance on his graduation day, which he did. So a lot of preparation went into graduation, as well as him completing. So it was a very big moment. He could not get it back. And it was very dear to him as well because, of course, the person who he loved was not there. Imagine walking across the stage now, and just something you worked so hard for was being snatched back. It reflects in your picture. It reflects in your person when you sit down and being humiliated. Children coming up to tease you at the graduation, saying, "Oh," and snatching back and saying, "Oh, well, you didn't get your diploma," at the graduation. And your family on the way out saying, "Did you see the first boy? He didn't get his diploma." And the family having to speak up and say, "No, his family is here." That is a flawed policy, the whole graduation. But being the family members that we are, we did uplift him.
But, I want you to finish, but we've let you go on double the time because I didn't, because what you're saying is important. So while I don't want to cut you off, I also am asking you to...
That being said, he was caused harm. We need to also think of students' mental health because thank God that he did, he does have a family that supports him because it could have went a different way because he did nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have a video to reflect that. Thank you.
Come on up. Please share your name.
Is it at the graduation?
Good evening, School Board of Education Superintendent. I'm Ms. Gladue, a high school-level administrator, and I have served as a middle school principal. I understand the last thing that a middle-school-age child wants is to be singled out and/or embarrassed. Unfortunately, I'm here because that's exactly what happened to Justin Abercrombie. While I understand the decorum, requested and expected a formal program like graduation, educators must be aware of intentional and unintentional harm inflicted on our young people. I am here today because I was appalled to learn of the treatment that Justin received when diploma was physically snatched from his hands because an audience member who was not even related to him or there for his support disobeyed the directive of the principal to remain silent during the calling of names. I would conclude that the point about being quiet was lost on humiliation that he experienced as a young man who has already endured life challenges that made this particular experience in his life weightier than it may have been for his peers and other families. Unfortunately, his mother has been left with the challenge of consoling her child and a photo of him without a diploma in his hand. Again, while I understand policy, it should not trump civility and compassion. This issue is exacerbated by the fact that the person who disobeyed the directive has gone unaddressed and was not impacted by his actions. I am asking that you figure out a way to make Justin, his mother, and his family whole. While I don't expect another graduation ceremony, I feel compelled to ask for his moment to be commemorated while at least a professional photographer with his diploma in hand be provided to his family. Lastly, I would ask that you review your policies that may be perceived as archaic in nature and certainly emotionally traumatizing in reality. Oftentimes, what is done in the heat of the moment is never corrected and sometimes cannot be. Please don't let that be your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience come to address the board?
My name is Deborah Husbands, 754 Central Park Avenue. I live and work in the community, and I've been a nurse for forty-nine years, working with many school districts as well as hospitals and dialysis centers. I came to share this that may feel, this may be a dovetail to what you've already heard. However, I was addressing it from the mental health level, and I thought Mrs. Abercrombie was speaking particularly about the graduation policy. I would like to share a statement. It's very brief. Emotional injury, also called emotional damage or trauma, is harm that affects a person's emotional well-being. It can be caused by stressful events that shatter a person's sense of security, such as accidents, altercations, psychological, emotional abuse, and some of the things that were described earlier. And so, again, I was addressing, I did a lot of work on mental health this year. But it comes down to this for me, is that when I see anyone being injured, I've always stepped in. I have to. And I'm expecting to see a video of a graduation celebration and instead, this trauma. So I just encourage you to make people responsible for their own behaviors. It is a form of bullying to have others take responsibility for someone else's discretion. We're adults. We don't have to pick on children to get a point across. People need to be held accountable for their actions. A judge would clear a courtroom if someone disrupted it. Address the person who was up until that point a guest. If they no longer behave as a guest, show them to exit. Stand up face-to-face, adult-to-adult, and stop making children accountable for things that they're not responsible for. And I sure appreciate the time that you let me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else come to address any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Come on up.
Hi, everyone. Jenny Farley, 1-8148 Gottschalk Avenue. I just have a couple of things I want to say. First of all, thank you for this presentation. I really appreciate that you've updated your plan. I think it's really good to see that there are more efforts being made towards increasing diversity in our staff. I have one comment that I would, I would like to maybe be considered for next year, which is special education. As a mother of a special, a special-needs child, I think it is very important that we consider that some funds need to be directed toward this area in our community. I have been very graciously awarded everything that I've asked for, but I know that there are some parents who have not, and I feel like that needs to be addressed, especially in the form of transportation. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, let me just explain to you our policy. When we have people come and comment during audience participation, we like to take your comments and give them serious consideration and then respond at the next meeting. So rather than, you know, blurt out a comment that hasn't been made in a thoughtful manner, we want to take a look and figure out exactly what we can do better or what we can change. Um, so we appreciate you coming and talking to us and I can assure you that your comments will be addressed. But I don't want you to think that because we're not responding, we're not responding. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Next up, are there any responses to comments made at previous meetings?
Uh, yes. So Ms. Farley's here this evening and if the board recalls, last month, uh, she and another couple of people came and, and spoke to all of us and presented the board with a letter, which you can find in your packet. And basically, the, the question that was raised was how can we, as a district, do a better job of supporting specifically teachers of color? That was, that was the specific question. Um, and so, you know, I think it's important in, in one of those items that we had talked about, and I did meet with Ms. Farley and Mr. McLeod privately the following week. But I think it's important to go beyond simply saying, we are going to try to hit X number of teachers of color that we hire, right? That is important. Uh, but I wanted you to know, one of the first speakers last month was Kimian Khrushenko. And Kimian is a former teacher here. Uh, Kimian spoke pretty eloquently about the need, in her opinion, of our district to continue the affinity group work that she had started. Affinity, um, I'm sorry, Kimian, while she was employed, she's also partnering with Teach Plus. And part of that work had her doing affinity group leadership. She was doing that off-site at the Irwin Center. It was open to any educator to attend. Uh, but because of her, her employment here, it was mostly 153 staff members who were, who were going to those sessions. So when Kimian came last month and, and talked about her belief that that's an important step for us, I just know that I have the utmost respect for Kimian and the work she does. And I did follow up with her after that board meeting and I, and I talked at length with her and will continue to do so because I, I do believe uh in what she shared with the group last month. I, I, I think that's a, a proper course for us. So we'll continue those discussions. I talked about the specific hiring targets. Also, in the last month, each of our buildings, the principals are in the back, but each of our buildings met with our deep equity facilitators. Uh, we have one more year in our deep equity contract, but our goal next year is to make that work very localized to our building level. So each principal will be working with staff members on their steering committees uh to talk about how they're going to incorporate equity work within each of their buildings. And then also tonight, I have shared with the board at the end of your agenda, a, a first draft of an equity policy for our district to consider. As, as something that says, as a matter of board policy, here's our beliefs with regard to equity. So um, I, I include that for your perusal as a starting point of our conversation. Uh, but I also want to get feedback from our staff members on that process and that document as well. So I don't expect, I do not expect that that would be adopted in July because I want to have an opportunity for our staff members to get their eyes on it and offer input. Uh, but again, I think it's an important step for us to take as a district. So uh, you can find that first draft in your board packets.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we. Are there any board members who have any reports from board committees or other meetings you have attended?
Yeah, so we, um, financing property met last week and we talked about about half a dozen different items. Um, many of them are, are actually on the agenda um this evening for, for approval by the board. Um, we talked about food contract, we talked about um um approval of insurance and a contract with our new architects. Uh, and then also a few other things like Dr. McAllister mentioned, the, the new, um, the new surface in, at the Willow Playground. Um, so again, many of the things are on, on tonight's agenda. And I'll run if you want to cover anything else that we may, that I didn't.
No, it's spot on and I think it was hinted tonight is that it's, it's extremely important for us to look ahead for the next five years with the governor signing a bill so we can ensure that, you know, we have things that happen sporadically, but that we can stay on task, uh, being good stewards fiduciary for our, for the residents. Um, so that's something that we'll be doing more in F and P, just really looking ahead. And um, we'll be challenged, as we've all, always been, to prioritize because there's a lot that needs to be done. We're grateful for the funds, but it's a lot that needs to be done.
Thank you. Any other board committees?
Yes, the Educational Progress Committee also met. Um, just same as Alex, a lot of the things that we discussed are covered um to be approved um in tonight's uh board packet. Um, like Dr. McAllister stated, um, Kimian um talked to us about some affinity group things and so we continue our discussions with that, um, as well as the support that we can give our teachers of color. Um, we also, also in our packet, um, we're going to discuss um tuition based uh or non-tuition based approval for staff, for student staff.
Very good, thank you. And we have the superintendent's report.
I have nothing new other than what I've already said.
Okay, great, thank you. We have several consent agenda items tonight. The first is to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for July two thousand twenty-four. The second is disposal, disposal of outdated items.
Yes, anytime we have items that need to be disposed of, we ask for the board to formally approve that. Uh, you'll find some PE equipment that is outdated and also some musical equipment that can no longer be repaired.
Thank you. Any questions on the outdated items? Okay, we have to adopt new revised policies from press issue one fourteen.
Yes, four times a year, press gives us updated policy language. So this is the latest recommended language changes. A, a lot of these are simply reviewing existing language and then updating the date of adoption. Uh, there is some, uh, some changed language with regard to Title IX per their recommendations. But you have access to all of those proposed changes in the sixty-seven page document.
Any questions on the new policies?
No.
And revised policies? Okay, we have a personnel report.
Yes, personnel, I'll just men, mention a couple. There's, it's always exciting, it's sad, but it's exciting when staff members move up into new positions. Albeit, it's disappointing because it's elsewhere. You know, we only have so many positions of leadership. So uh, when you lose people such as Jill Seznalski, who's been an outstanding teacher at Churchill, she's moving into an instructional coaching position in Piattone. Uh, Saranja Hicks is moving into an instructional coaching position with ISC Four. So those are two great staff members from Churchill specifically. Uh, hate to lose them, but again, congratulations in their new, new positions.
Very good. Any questions on the personnel report?
No.
Any questions from the audience on any consent agenda items? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in items seven A, seven B, seven C, and seven D.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. We have second payment, I'm sorry, these are our action agenda items. We have second payment of May two thousand twenty-four bills and the first payment of June two thousand twenty-four bills. Any questions on the bills from the board, from the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education authorize the second payment of May two thousand twenty-four bills and the first payment on June. That's okay. Uh, June two thousand twenty-four bills in an amount not to exceed three million four hundred thirty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes. Motion carries. We have to award food service, grocery, and meat product bids for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year.
Yes, thank you to Dr. Trinberger for leading uh the bid process. Uh, did you want to talk briefly about this or you just want me to handle it?
Let's talk about the food.
Food prices are going up. That's the, that's the summary.
I just want to share with the full board that we've had a nice transition with Ann Simons and Dana Prezda. And his last day was Thursday. Um, so she's finished up her, her career with District one fifty-three. So Ann did make some minor modifications to the, this bid. She did a lot of work on this. And I think we'll see some changes as we make that transition during the year. She wants to look at a little bit different menu cycles and try and make some improvements. But we did see these food prices increase about twenty percent from last year.
Thank you. Any questions on the?
Yeah, just curious, um, because certain big, big stores, big houses are doing deep discounts on basic needs. You know, once we're locked in on this, if, is there any mechanism in there where we can revisit? If, you know, because I know inflationary cost is high, but for instance, if, if we're starting to see a drop down in the price of various, you know, goods, milk, whatever, you know, are we just locked in it? Where we're locked in, just curious.
I don't believe we locked in any quantities on, on these particular bids.
So we can all set a bias on them?
Because of the dollar thresholds, it, it is a requirement that we do go out for a bid. But you know, she, you know, she's very diligent. She has other sources, uh, because she's, uh, she worked for a, a food service management company for many years. Uh, so she's got some other vendors that she may pull from during the year as well.
Good timing.
Other questions from the audience? Okay. Um, is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the food service director that the Board of Education award the grocery and meat products to Performance Food Group Montgomery, Illinois at a cost not to exceed one hundred forty thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy cent. And Gordon Foods Service, Grand Rapids, Michigan, at a cost not to exceed forty-two thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-three cent. And Cisco Foods of Baraboo, Wisconsin, at a cost not to exceed one hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred twelve dollars and sixty cent for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. And we have to award milk bid for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school years.
So the, the board does a two-year bid for milk. Um, historically, we had two bidders, Prairie Farms and Crystal Dairy. Uh, interesting enough, Crystal Dairy actually buys from Prairie Farms.
Any questions on the milk bid? Okay, from the audience, yes.
How many of us prepare for bids if we know this about wanting to apply together?
Well, they're both allowed to bid. They're, the bids are open to any company who wants to bid.
But we chose to choose them.
No, we didn't choose them. We put out a, something to allow people to bid and they choose to, to bid.
So we, we advertise for bids, we have no control over who responds to the bid. It's, it's an open bid process. Any, anybody that meets the qualifications of the bid document are allowed to submit a bid.
That, that's for food, for anything that we go out for bid on. Yeah, it, it's self-selected. Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the food service director that the Board of Education award the milk contract to Prairie Farms Dairy Crestwood, Illinois at a cost not to exceed forty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and zero cents for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, and the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school years.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes. Motion carries. We have approval of agreement with Click Collective Liability Insurance Cooperative.
So many of these items are related to our financing property meeting and so um fall under Eric's domain. I'll just have him keep going. Eric, Click.
So the board is a member of the Click Cooperative, which is a, composed of many school districts in the greater Chicagoland area. Uh, we have property casualty insurance through Click. Uh, that policy actually has a slight decrease for FY twenty-five of point two percent. So we're asking the board to approve one hundred and eleven thousand dollars and sixty-eight cents for property casualty. Uh, workers' comp's a little bit different story. Workers' comp is, is, that policy is driven by claims history as well as salary increases. So there's two components to that. Uh, we did have a couple of very significant claims this year. Uh, so we're looking at a increase of thirty-six and a half percent and a, a total cost of one hundred two thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars. And there is a small fiduciary liability policy of two thousand two, uh, two hundred dollars. We also talked about increasing our cyber liability coverage and we're going to be adding one million dollars to that. And that will be added onto the bill for about ten thousand dollars.
Any questions from the board? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education approve the renewal of the agreement with Click Cooperative.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have the approval of contract with Studio G C.
Yes, earlier, you heard Kevin, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, talk about uh how we have now partnered with a new architectural firm. So we're excited about that as we look at, again, updating our buildings and modernizing them. Um, Eric, did you want to talk a little bit about Studio G C whom we've selected?
Sure. Um, so we went through our architect selection process and I believe we had thirteen or fourteen firms apply. Uh, Dr. McAllister and I whittled those down to three firms that were then interviewed by the FME Committee and the two of us. And we picked Studio G C out of that process and then we have entered into a contract negotiation with them. The contract has been uh analyzed and approved by the board attorney. And the fees for Studio G C are seven and a half percent versus the nine to ten percent with the previous architect.
Any questions on Studio G C and our contract?
I just have like a couple of comments, I guess. So I was part of obviously the, the interview process and um of the, the three finalists. And all three of them, I think, were really good. And I, I'm pretty excited with the opportunities, potential opportunities that Studio G C has. And you know, just based upon their body of work, I think they'll probably be a really good fit. And I'm excited to see what kind of ideas and thoughts they recommend um going forward, especially when we start looking at a, um, a plan, a five-year plan of our facilities and so on, to see what, what areas we have for improvement. So should be, should be a good, should be a good collaboration with them, I think.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? Anyone in the audience have any comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education approve the contract with Studio G C.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman? Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have approval of contract with Midwest Analytics.
Yes, we've been partnering with Midwest Analytics for over ten years now. They're the ones that provide our growth metric to be used under the para law. And we recommend renewing with them for a three-year contract. They are far and away the least expensive option when it comes to getting this, this number.
Any questions on Midwest Analytics contract? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve a three-year contract with Midwest Analytics at a cost not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. We have approval of contract with Sin Lawn for playground resurfacing at Willow.
Now, so just stay up there, brother.
I mentioned this earlier.
I didn't get too far away. So this is a proposal to install uh the rubberized playground surface and just under nineteen hundred square feet fenced in area we added at Willow for the pre-K program. Uh, this is much needed to give our, our pre-K students an opportunity to get some gross motor skill work in and not have to get all muddy in the process. We're quite pleased that we're going to be able to offer this. Uh, and also want to give a shout out to Morgan Council for writing an amendment for our, our pre-K grant. The, the state came through with about a hundred thousand dollars in emergency relief funds and that's where the funding is coming for this playground.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board?
No questions, it's a statement. I just want to commend the district. I've seen an uptick in our ability to apply for grants and receive grants. And maybe it's just me and I, I think that's kudos, uh, Eric to you and the rest and Dr. McAllister and the district. So appreciate it.
Second that.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience? If you haven't seen our adorable pre-K Little Tykes playground, it's really, it makes you smile. Okay, is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that the Board of Education approve the contract with Sinlon for playground resurfacing at Willow in an amount not to exceed $64,250.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Baffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnaman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes. Motion carries.
Ms. Marks, before we move on, I just want to point out Melissa Lawson's in the back. And Melissa is the principal at Willow. She's been talking for a long time about getting this surface for the pre-K. Her teachers, I already told your teachers, this is a surprise perhaps to you. I talked to her teachers last week. They were ecstatic to hear about this surface. But as you all know, this is Melissa's last board meeting, so she is retiring, very sad. But Melissa, I wanted to give you one final gift, a brand-new surface for your pre-K.
Okay. We need to adopt the final amended budget for FY '24. Got anything?
Yeah, is there anything?
Anyone got anything?
We had the public hearing.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Chief School Business Official that the Board of Education adopt the amended budget for the 2023-2024 school year as presented and adopt the resolution declaring the amended budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year as attached.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnaman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
Yes.
Mrs. Baffey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, we have on the agenda the approval to allow the children of non-resident employees to attend district schools.
Yes, so last year, the state passed legislation that, for the first time, allows a school district to give an option to adopt a policy that would allow non-residents who are employees to have their children attend this district and not charge tuition. Now, tuition is different than school fees. Tuition is about $13,000 a year. School fees are about $300 a year. So we're talking waiver of school tuition, $13,000 a year. There's clearly one, and we've talked extensively about this for several months. There's clearly one reason that the state is adopting this as an option for districts and one reason that we would consider it. It is getting more and more challenging to find high-quality staff. So whatever you can do to provide an incentive to perhaps attract somebody, or, once they're here, keep them, I think we need to consider doing. And so my recommendation is that we adopt this and allow the district to pursue this for our employees who do not live here. And there's some caveats that I've put in the board packet that I think are important. And the first is, obviously, the concern is, what if you get inundated with a bunch of new students and your class sizes explode? So one thing that I want to make sure is that we put a limit on how many students we would be willing to accept under this policy. So what I have recommended is we put that cap at 20. In a district of 1,900 students, 20 new students would not cause an undue burden on class sizes, assuming, of course, that they're somewhat dispersed over the grade levels. There's no guarantee, but it's strong likelihood that they would be spread out over multiple grade levels, so any particular grade would not have a huge increase in students. There are some other parameters that I've put in there, which, again, you can read and ask questions about, but I do feel it is worth pursuing. And nothing says we have to stick with the policy if we get into it for a year and we discover that it's not working or that there were unexpected unintended consequences. We could obviously change that policy in the future. But I do think it is worth considering for adoption this evening and then putting that in place for next school year.
Questions or comments from the board?
I mean, I think one of the things I noticed when I read it is I did appreciate the, I'm going to call it criteria that need to be met for someone to qualify for this benefit. I'm going to call it a benefit. I don't know if there's a better way of describing it, but I think it's good that there are certain criteria that need to be met before someone qualifies. It's just not something that someone is eligible for on their first day of hire. And then along with some of the other criteria too, I think that's important to put some parameters around it. And I did see a lot of parameters, as you mentioned, around this option, so.
I think it was a great discussion that we had in Ed Progress, Jim and Brodick and Dr. Castor. We all had a great discussion, and so I think it's a good criteria for us to follow.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
You know, thinking of that further on that discussion that we've had, we talked about growing our own internally. This is an extension of that. It's kind of growing your own 2.0, right? We're just extending it down to our staff's children. And I think it's a great move. Hopefully, there's staff that are interested in this and take advantage of it, because I believe our product is outstanding, not only what we present from the teacher's side, but what our students receive on the student's side. So I look forward to this, and hopefully it helps us to continue to grow our own.
Yeah, I definitely love it. I would just say that, you know, the risk management in me would say that when school starts back, just a reminder to all staff, if you do have a student in a district, the proper ways to address issues as a parent versus teacher and so on. Just, you know, just reminding myself of closed sessions that we've had. And I think it's a great opportunity for us to reinforce, you know, how we do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I want to add, you know, as Dr. McAllister said, it is increasingly difficult to attract and retain the best staff. And some of the neighboring school districts have this policy in place. We need to use every tool we can to retain, to especially retain our outstanding staff. And I think that in addition to providing a really good environment to work in, we've done some other very creative things. We were the first district that we could find in Illinois to offer paid maternity and paternity leave. We even beat CPS to that. So there are other things that we have done, and part of it is just the way we've created this family environment for our staff. Well, if we're creating a family environment, their families are our families. And so I think it's, I do have some reservations about this. However, I believe it's the right thing to do right now, and as Dr. McAllister said, we can revisit it. I don't see it having a tremendous effect on our class size, because I don't think we will have every teacher with a third grader sending third grade. We're not going to have 20 new third graders that need a new third-grade class.
Fingers crossed.
Right. I may be sorry I said that, but I'm kind of expecting that they will be pretty spread out. So I think this is a tool we have in our bag to keep doing the good things we're doing and keep creating that family environment. Okay, any questions from the board, from the audience? Yes, Representative Davis.
I'll be formal. I'm Will Davis. I live at 1733 Maple Road. Not so much a question, more so than a comment. So some of you may know or may not know that in Springfield, I chair the Appropriations Committee for Elementary and Secondary Education, so the state dollars that flow, flow through the committee that I chair. When we passed the school funding formula back in 2017, the new formula, one of the things that we kind of took some ownership of were waivers. I think very similar to what you just discussed. And I'm a part of a small ad hoc committee of legislators who have to decide whether or not we're going to allow the waivers to go through, or are we going to defer and let ISB decide whether the waivers happen? So what we may see happening is the fact that legislation was passed that allowed you to make that decision. We may see more of that type of legislation coming forward. So to your point about whether or not it's good or bad, but your willingness to see how it happens, I would welcome the opportunity, maybe after a year or so, Dr. McAllister, to hear some reflections on the impact that your decision has on your district. And maybe others might be considering as well, but, you know, legislation touches in a lot of different ways. So I'm fortunate enough to just be sitting here today as you discuss something that I otherwise would have to make a decision on. So again, I look forward to your feedback.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You know, we're always willing to share any of our opinions and suggestions with you. Okay, is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that the Board of Education approve a policy to allow the children of non-resident employees to attend District 153 schools.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Zinnaman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
Yes.
Mrs. Baffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes, motion carries. We have approval of policy to waive school fees for children of in-district employees.
Yes, so related to the previous discussion, this is for our staff members who live here and who pay taxes here. The question becomes, what can we do to retain them as staff members? And so one of the things that, again, I am asking for your support and approval of is to waive the annual school fee. And earlier I talked about the difference between school fees and school tuition. So school fees typically a few hundred dollars a year per student. So for example, if we have a teacher who has two children in our district and, you know, the fees would add up to $600, my recommendation is to waive the fees for that employee. Again, as an incentive, as a thank you to them, but as an incentive to keep them here. You know, we looked, I asked Mary Kay to pull up a staff report of how this would impact us financially, and it's less than $8,000 based on our current staff and the kids that they have in the district. So it is not a large financial hit for the district. But I hope it certainly engenders goodwill and, again, keeps people wanting to be a part of the 153 family.
Any questions?
No, I think the timing is good, too. We have new housing. Well, rentals that are coming over in downtown Homewood. We have folks that may be coming in the district with children, and I just wish it was about 18 years ago, quite frankly. I'm sorry I said that out loud. That was in her voice, but no, this is great.
I'll say what you were thinking and ask the question of, does this apply to school board members? Just asking for a friend.
A little bit of self-dealing there, but we'll strike that from the record.
Yeah, just like that health insurance doesn't.
I know.
I know, I know.
Attempted humor.
I know.
Certainly today's day and age with the economy, every little bit will help our families.
Absolutely, no, absolutely.
Yeah, I definitely support this as well.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that the Board of Education approve a policy which will waive school fees for the children of in-district employees.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
Yes.
Mrs. Baffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes, motion carries. We have employment.
Yes, our principals, incoming and outgoing, have collectively been working together to find great staff members for next year. So I'm pleased to bring five people to you for employment for next year. Michael Hobson, custodian at Willow. Jason Jackson will be replacing Bob Dippold, who is retiring as our hardware specialist. Jason's a Homewood resident. We're really excited to bring him on board. And then we have three teachers. Star Ortega is a perm sub at James Hart. Star, student taught here last year, so we're excited to keep her. She's also bilingual and able to work with some of our students. There was one student that we had in eighth grade who did not speak English, and Star was able to provide tutoring for him this year, so we're excited to keep her. Hannah Henson, a fifth-grade teacher at Churchill, and Maria Garcia, a seventh-grade math teacher at James Hart.
Any questions on employment?
Love it.
Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Administration that the Board of Education approve the employment of Michael Hobson effective June 10, 2024, Jason Jackson effective June 20, 2024, and Star Ortega, Hannah Henson, and Maria Garcia effective August 19, 2024, upon the terms recommended by the Superintendent, conditioned only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report and upon receipt no later than August 1, 2024, of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the position to be filled.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Baffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnaman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes, motion carries. We have discussion items, first reading of equity policy statement.
Yeah, I referenced this earlier. Again, I would ask that you review this. I will be sharing this with our staff and asking for their input, but eventually, perhaps in August or September, I'll bring this to you for approval to add to our official board policy.
Great, and one other discussion item. I'd like to discuss how grateful I am to Melissa Lawson. I know it's your last meeting. And I basically watched you grow up and grown up with you here. And the work that you've done with our youngest, littlest children and our parents whose first experience of letting their children go off to school is in your hands. You've done it with grace and compassion and an amazing sense of humor that I certainly have always appreciated. I know that, but I do. You will be missed so much. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for all you've done for Homewood's children and families. You've made our job easier, sitting up at this table, so thank you.
You're here.
Is there any written communication to the board?
Nice job, Secretary.
Thank you, Ansin. Dear school board, thank you for the beautiful picture frame and amazing retirement celebration. I'm so fortunate to have spent 22 years working for HSD. So many memories and friendships. This is not goodbye, but see you again sincerely. And we got...
Sneddon?
Sneddon, yes, yes. It looked like two L's. Sneddon, it was in cursive. It's not using my house anymore, so forgive me. David Letterman, for those. David Letterman, I know you younger.
That was Johnny Carson, sorry.
Johnny Carson? Yeah, okay. All right, this is another thank you. I want to extend my gratitude, by the way, it's not in cursive. I want to extend my gratitude to each of you for the wonderful retirement gift. I will be using it to put a picture of my grandkids in it. It has been a great experience working for HSD 153. I've enjoyed helping all of the children and staff throughout my 25 years at Homeless School District 153. Sincerely, Robert. And he says his name, Japold?
Japold.
Japold. And that is it.
Thank you.
My duties have been served. Thank you, Jim, for the nomination.
Just trying to keep your name in lights, Ron.
There is a form in here that everyone needs to sign before you leave it for our budget, so don't leave without signing it. There's three copies. You have to sign your name three times. Mary Kay will track you down if you don't. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries.